We'll restore it tonight. We're going to have the invocation and we're going to have the pledge allegiance. The pledge will be given by, normally, John Baker. But John's kind of under the weather. And we ask Richie, wherever he is, will you remember John Baker?
Yes, sir.
When you pray tonight. And we also, Phil Hamilton lost his daughter. And we ask that you remember the Hamilton family. He's our mechanic up at the city garage. Okay? Let's all stand together and we'll do the pledge first. John Baker, we're asking you to lead it.
The pledge of allegiance is to the body of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and with liberty and justice for all.
Richie.
Chief of power, yes, for prayer. Heavenly Father, as we sit here, take care of the business of the city, we ask you, God, for your grace and your love and your kindness. We pray for the Hamilton family and their loss. That you would come around them and strengthen them and be with them. We pray for strength for our attorney, John Baker. That you bless him where he is. And that you'd bless these men and women here that are serving. Serving for the people and that they could have a voice. And God, we ask you, Father, that make their decisions wise and just and have them care about the things which they should be doing today, the business at hand. Give them strength and give them knowledge. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Thanks, Richie.
Thank you. We have Chris Appel. He's an associate down at Baker and Budwell. And Chris is sitting in for John tonight. I call him Chris Apple, but it's Appel.
It's a mistake a lot of people make.
Do they? We're grateful to have you tonight, Chris, and welcome you here to the city.
Thank you. I'm grateful to be here.
Okay. With that, I'd like to call the meeting of August 18, 2014, of the common council of City of Conans, voted order. And our first order of business will be to check for cell phones and see if we got them turned off or on vibration. Second order of business will be to have a roll call.
Councilwoman Rish.
Present.
Councilman Weber.
Councilman Shomel.
Yes.
Councilman Nobby.
Present.
Councilwoman Montgomery.
Present.
Councilwoman Creach.
Present.
Councilwoman Stevens.
Present.
Let the record show, we have six of the seven council people present. We have a forum and we can do business. Reading the minutes of the August 4, 2014, regular meeting.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes as they were sent out to the council members. Are there any additions or corrections? Nonappearing, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carried. We have, under new business tonight, pending ordinance 3128. This ordinance is the approval of authorizing payment of sick day benefits to utility personnel, which we discussed and we looked at last time. Just to give you a brief synopsis, this would be for the non-contractual people that worked for the utility that earned sick days prior to 2008. The sick days were taken out of the ordinance in 2008, so it goes back to 2008. And it also includes their pay rate at the 2008 pay rate. Julie has a tentative figure, however, if this ordinance passes tonight, she will have the girls at the office figure, an exact figure for each employee. It affects about eight people. I'm ready to open the ordinance up for discussion or whatever you'd like to do.
Your Honor, you want discussion for council or general public?
What'd you say?
You want the, you want the discussion for the council members only or for the general public?
Well, this should be council discussion.
Okay.
Yep.
I have, I have no comment regarding, when it comes time to approve or disapprove, I would like to make a motion that we pass ordinance 3128.
Second. We vote motion that we pass pending ordinance 3128. And you've all had it in your hands since last Friday. Further discussion, we've got it on the table.
Yeah, what's that tentative number again?
It's 53,000 something. I don't have that figured with me, but it's a little over $53,000 total.
Your iron fellow council members, I would like to say something before the vote. I believe that an decision was made in late 2008 to cease paying non-union personnel at the utilities. It was a cost-cutting move. The intent, I believe, included the past, present, and future. And in an effort to reduce operating costs at the utilities, because utilities have lost a $700,000 a year customer when the Easton plant closed and it was an attempt to bring utility non-union people in line with all the other non-union, non-contract employees of the city who had never enjoyed this benefit. And while the financial situation at the utilities has certainly improved somewhat, we still do not have a sufficient reserve fund, in my opinion, that would cover the cost of a major replacement or repair situation in the water and sewer departments. And I understand these employees feel that they are entitled to this, $53,868.10. But at the same time, I believe the council responsibility is to be careful in just how we distribute the money that we have in our reserve funds.
Your Honor, if I may.
Are you done, Brad?
Yes.
I'm sorry. If I may, I respectfully disagree with my colleague. He is correct. When I was council's representative, when the utility was at that time, and we initiated drastic measures. Seven people lost their jobs. There were some wage benefits that they did not receive. And as Councilman Shomel stated, things have gotten a little better. However, it is my opinion, up till and including December 31st, we owe this money to these people. Thank you.
Up till December 31st?
2008.
2008. I just want to be sure for the minutes that that's what you said.
Yeah.
All in. Anybody out there would like to speak about this issue? Anybody out there? Nonappearing, you ready for the question?
So.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Rish.
Yes.
Councilman Shomel.
No.
Councilman Nobby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery.
Yes.
Councilman Creach.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens.
Yes.
Okay, we have five yeses and one no. Would you like to suspend the rules that the motion carries? Would you like to suspend the rules and consider it on third and final reading tonight?
Didn't we do the, pass the first, oh, no, this is the first.
No, this is the first. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to consider this on third and final reading by suspension of rules. On suspension of rules only, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody say no? The ayes have it. We could consider it on third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second that we consider pending ordinance number 3128 on third and final reading. Anybody? Discussion? Okay, you ready for the question? Roll call.
Councilman Shomel.
No.
Councilman Nobby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery.
Yes.
Councilman Creach.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish.
Yes.
Vote is five to one. Motion carries. The ordinance passes.
Your Honor, I'd like to know where this money is coming from. Could it be from Treasury advisors?
Well, it'll have to be divided between the sewer of water and a small part out of the stormwater. It'll be just like the regular division.
Thank you.
There's a formula that has to be used when you pay wages. And it'll have to come out of there. I discussed with the clerk treasurer possibly paying the people that retired immediately and maybe paying those people that haven't retired yet at a later date or over a period of a year or two, so it wouldn't strip so much water from, so much money, not water, I got water on my mind, so much money from the fund. And I'm not real concerned about the water fund. I'm concerned about the sewer fund. It's pretty low right now. But we'll discuss that. The ordinance just says we're to pay it. And we'll work that out over the next few days here. Okay, moving right on. Under new business, request for an additional appropriation for a defibrillator for Commander I'll let him explain if he can do it better.
Okay, what we've got, we've got a defibrillator. It's a Philips MRX. It's, we've had approximately eight years. We've had numerous trouble with it. It's been sitting numerous times. We've got right out, including the repair cost estimate for this time, we're going to have about $8,300 in repairs over the period of time. We contacted physio control, who we deal with on the other monitor we have, and they give us a quote of $12,950 to replace it. And that included the monitor plus a three-year service agreement. So we would like to, for what we're spending on it, I'd like to just replace it. It lasts about six to eight months and goes down again. And this time, the repair is estimated as $1,890, almost $2,000 to fix this.
Is this a 50/50 deal with the county?
Yes.
What we would do is we would appropriate this out of the Riverboat Fund and then bill the county their half, whatever fund they choose to pay us. I discussed it with President of the City, or the Commissioners today, and he thought we really don't have any choice. And we have defibrillators, you do.
How quickly can you get this?
Pretty quick.
About, probably two weeks or less. We call them tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we pass.
Yeah, we'll advertise for a public hearing, but we'll assume you're going to pass it and we'll move fast because we do need it.
So right now you have one?
Pardon me?
Right now you only have one?
No, we have another one on there that's approximately 20, 25 years old. It's a physio control. It is working, but it doesn't have all the stuff that the new one does. And there is things that we, our medics do need that's not on it. And we'll be on this one.
It's a life-saving device. Is there a second to the motion?
Yeah, I agree with Connie. We need to get this soon as we can.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second.
As someone who totes their own around in their body, it's very important.
Any further discussion? This is to give us permission to advertise for public hearing. Riverboat funded $12,000. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Go ahead and advertise.
We probably ought to go ahead and talk about full dates here.
I think I want to give them a little history where we are here. As you know, I've been telling you for the last couple of years, we have an '08/7 ambulance. It has a 6O engine in it. That may not mean a lot to a lot of people. A 6O engine is a bad engine. We're having trouble with them every place. This thing has quit on us just constantly. It's in the shop, it's in the shop. It doesn't make it to the accident scene. It doesn't make it back to the hospital. And we have fought with it now and fought with it, trying to figure out how we can get out from under it. We've tried to put a new motor. We can't find anything that'll fit it. Phil has worked on it. We've had the cab off. They've put numerous parts on it, and it still goes back to the same problems. And if you ask anybody that knows anything about engines and you tell them they have a 6O Ford engine, they'll tell you, we don't want it. So we've researched and we found out that we can put this box, the ambulance box, on a Chevy Duramax chassis. And they're changing them, there's three companies for sure that are changing them rapidly. They're taking these boxes off and that's the answer to it, put them in a Chevy Duramax. We met with a couple of companies. Julie's been up there and I've been up there with the companies. Dale's been researching this for the last six weeks. We found a couple of companies that will put this box on a Duramax. We think it should be a diesel. We can buy a Chevy. Gas, $10,000 cheaper, but we think it should be a diesel because longevity, wear and tear.
Your Honor, I didn't think you could have a gas ambulance.
Yeah, in the Chevy we could.
Okay.
It's a Ford.
In the Ford, yeah.
Okay.
But we think it should be a diesel because longevity, cheaper, you know, better mileage, more power. But anyway, Dale tonight has surprises. And here's what, Julie and I have talked with the county commissioners, here's what we'd like to do. We have approximately about $80,000 net coming off of our refund for Medicare or Medicaid. We already have that. And what we'd like to do is order the chassis, go ahead and start the conversion. It takes 90 days to get to conversion. Get it done and get it back in here. And then try to pay the balance off with the money that we get back on our rebate next year. If the time is not on time, we would probably have to finance it through a lease purchase plan. We would do that, and then when we get the money, pay a big portion of it off. Hopefully, we might even be able to pay all of it off. We've, again, talked with county commissioners. I talked with them again this afternoon because the Board of Works passed this this afternoon. They're willing to do this. They think this is the thing we should do.
Your Honor, you might mention the price that Dale gave us this afternoon.
Well, he's going to give them the prices here and tell them all about the ambulance.
Have you guys looked into the kit? I've heard there's some kits to rebuild those.
Gabe, we have heard about everything. We've talked to everybody. We haven't found anybody that's been able to fix a 6O engine that is dependable. You know, Phil is an expert and he's tried everything. We get one thing fixed and you key the motor and the thing won't run over 10 mile an hour. You key the mic and it won't run. I mean, it's just got so many problems. And I'll give you a little history. I was on the council, sat in Tom's place with me about this. I didn't want to buy the thing because it wasn't done. And we were waiting on a grant. And it got bought before it was finished because they wanted to show it at the fair. It was brought down here, partially done, and I don't think it was done right. That's my own opinion. The floor is buckled in it. I think we hurried them too much. But that's water over the dam. We got to fix it. And unless you guys can come up with a better fix, Dale, tell them about the ambulance.
Dale, you have some, you have some prices, sir?
Yeah. What we did, we contacted, it's called Crossroad Ambulance out of Elkhart. They came, they are a company that mainly does remounts. That's what we're doing. They came back with a price of $85,920. We also contacted Alexis Fire, a company out of Illinois. They do their remounts at one of their branches in South Carolina. They have a salesman here at Rushville. They came in at $86,905. The difference between the two is that Alexis Fire wanted to tear out the whole floor, put a new floor in the back end. Crossroads wanted to take the floor up, lay a piece of aluminum over it, put a new floor, linoleum, back down. I re-talked to the salesman from Crossroads today, and after talking with him, I think that's a lot better way to go. I had concerns this morning.
Yes.
And after talking with him some more, I think that is the best way. They use a, they use basically the same aluminum that they put on this outside skirting would be on the floor, so I don't believe we would have, ever have any trouble with it after that. We also contacted a company in Indianapolis, Donley, which is where the ambulance originated from. We had trouble getting a bid from them, and after talking to their salesman this evening, they had, between them and myself, we were having internet issues. Is why we didn't receive that. But their bid came in at $87,000, $87, so they're, they're above everyone else. So right now, my feeling is I would like to continue with the Crossroad.
So what you're, so what you're going to get then for $85,000 is a complete new chassis?
We will get a-
And they will put our box on that chassis?
We will get a complete new General Motors chassis. We will get the box refurbished, any dent, anything like that would be taken out, seats recovered in it, different interior, and some of the exterior lights would be different, all brought up to new standards.
Okay.
The new flooring put in it, all for the 87, or 85.
I assume you've talked to other services that, because I've heard good things about these Chevys. I just assumed that you-
I talked to a medic at Green, Newcastle. They have, I believe it's four of the Chevys.
Okay.
And their oldest is, I believe, he told me it was three years old. They put brakes on, and that's all they've ever done to it.
Okay.
So they are real happy with their-
Rushville is doing, one of theirs right now, they're converting it with another one to go.
Rushville is, Rushville Hospital is converting two of them. They're doing one right now. They expect delivery back, I think it's the 21st of this month.
Okay.
But it's on a Ford chassis. And as far as dealing with this company, they've had very good luck with them.
You might mention that this ambulance was built originally to be able to take that.
Yes. Yeah, this was, when they designed this truck, it was designed, the bed to come off and be put on a new one. They're estimating that you could possibly do it three to four times, as long as the structure of the bed withstands it. And so far, we have no issues with the bed at all.
I can recall, when I first got on council prior to that, you had a lot of issues with that Ford chassis. And I, I know Phil tried everything.
Yes.
And I had no problem.
Thing of it is, if we pay ahead for the chassis, like when we order it, if we pay for it, we are eligible for a $1,500 discount. So, which would mean, this money, though it's come in, it's sitting in the general fund. We have to appropriate it before we can spend it.
Okay.
So we will need to appropriate, and we think it's $40,711. And that'll be an additional appropriation in the general fund, but it's coming from this money that we have received back from Medicare and Medicaid, from the federal government, so.
What we need tonight is permission to advertise for additional appropriation out of that fund.
All of that money eventually is going to have to be appropriated as it has to be spent, so everybody needs to understand.
Time we're all finished with all this, the county will-
If we're sure, we'll split it.
No, but because half of this money is real, technically, the county's.
Okay, that's okay.
So we're going to have, we're going to appropriate it. We're just going to keep it. We'll appropriate it and pay for things.
We're appropriating.
And then we'll, if there's anything to settle up with, when it's all said and done.
All the money is going to go back into the ambulance venture.
Yeah.
But we're just going to pay for that chassis up front real quick so we get that $1,500.
Get the discount, yeah.
Does the old chassis have any value?
The Crossroad salesman told us $500.
I told him, they were willing to take it on trade for 500. I told them no, and Phil agreed with me. There's more money in tires on it, and we're going to try to do something with it. We don't know exactly what we're going to do. We're going to try and do something with it.
What was the exact number on that one, again?
What's the actual cost of the ambulance?
$85,920.
And we have, almost $41,000, is that what we had, that we've already got and we're going to have to-
No, we've got 80.
We've actually got.
We've got the 80.
About 80.
Eighty, almost $81,000.
And that's for Medicare?
It's, it's a program, and I'm not even sure I understand it all.
Reimbursement program.
It's a reimbursement program.
Okay, I guess I'm confused because we, I had $80,000 down first and then I had $40,000 plus.
Well, the $40,000 is what we need to pay-
Now, oh, in order to get the $1,500.
To get the discount.
The $40,000 is the cost of the truck chassis.
Okay, sorry.
Let me tell you the real kicker on the whole thing. This will discourage you. We owe $50,000 on the junk car.
We do.
So we got to work all that out, but we think we can work it out.
We think maybe we can work it all out, where we can pay the old one off and pay for this one with those three years reimbursements and maybe be done with it.
We're not, not exactly sure, though.
No, we can't, we don't know what our third year reimbursement is going to be yet.
What was the cost of the original thing that's not even?
It's not that it costs that much. It was the fact that the administration at that time did a 15-year lease on it.
Lease.
And we actually had a grant that paid for-
Like $13,000.
No, it was more than that.
Did they pay the last 15 years?
We only paid seven, less than $7,000 a year.
Fran, you and I were there. I don't know if anybody else on this council was there at the time.
No, it was Gary.
Gary, me and you were there. I voted against it. I think you voted against it.
I think so, yes.
If you remember, I didn't want to do that.
No, I didn't.
You didn't want to do it. I don't think you did.
It's a USDA grant, I think, and the loan, the lease was through USDA.
I need permission to advertise for additional appropriation for the $40,000.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Further discussion? Anybody out there? On permission to advertise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? We'll move forward with it. It takes 90 days to get this converted, and we're going to, by good grace, we're going to get the wheels moving on this tomorrow morning, because we have really been through it with this thing.
So means it'll be in the back of for three months, then?
The company will supply us the truck to use while they're redoing this.
Oh, wow.
Okay. I think, for where we need to be, let's see. I went ahead and put that in there.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
We have before you pending ordinance 3129. I think we went over this with you last time.
I don't.
Yeah, we did. Yeah. When we ran out our equipment.
I don't think they did. They were the board of works.
You don't know about it?
I believe they are aware of it.
Brad and Mike are both outlaw.
Okay, are you guys out in the hall? Mayor Hyde. When we, when we do things for people, like we do things for other sewer companies or we use this stuff, we had a fee schedule, and I thought the old fee schedule was in here, but it's not. And our new management tells us that our fee schedule didn't even cover our cost. So we appointed a committee of the Board of Works, and the Board of Works Committee and the two executives of the utility, your two new ones, who you're looking at, came up with a new fee schedule. And of course, it was passed today by the Board of Works, but because it is money, it takes the council approval. So this would be pending ordinance 3129, and Brad, if you'll take it from there.
We pretty much doubled what we were charging for the equipment. It's about twice as much as we were charging before, and then we-
Brett, before you get too far along, since I don't know when most of people, this fee is for what?
We periodically go to Everton and do work for them.
Okay.
Because they all have the equipment. Or we might go to Elephant Hill Trailer Park or Pleasant Park.
Okay.
And assorted other places, but those are the main ones.
It's not for the city ratepayers?
No.
Okay.
So when we do that, before we were barely covering our costs. Matter of fact, if we worked a full day in Everton, we probably lost money.
Okay.
So we doubled the price on the equipment, and now we'll be able to charge at the overtime rate. And before, we were just charging at the rate, our rate of pay, but not getting overtime. Most of the stuff we do on overtime, generally, after hours on Saturday. Generally, after hours on Saturday. So this basically gets us where we can break even, even make a little bit.
Okay.
I told both these guys when they took over, I said, one thing I want you to do, I want you to look at places where we can make money, not places where we can spend money. And so they've come up with this, I think this is a wonderful thing, they've only been in office about a month, and they've come up, they, they realize that they were, we're not doing very good when we lose money by helping people. We're not out to hurt anybody, but we don't, you know, that sewer backed truck is probably a, how about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck.
Probably double that.
Yeah. So anyway, we need to pass this pending ordinance thirty-one twenty-nine. Any further questions? I'm ready for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, that we pass pending ordinance thirty-one twenty-nine, which would set the fees for using, uh, equipment from the utility, and, uh, at a different rate. By the way, this other rate was made in two thousand and seven, so you can see how obsolete the, the rate was. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Anybody out there have any discussion? Anybody upset with it? Okay, since we're talking about money, let's have a roll call, though.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rich?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Since this is an ordinance, would you like to suspend the rules and approve it on third reading tonight?
So moved.
A motion and a second to suspend the rules and consider pending ordinance thirty-one twenty-nine on third and final reading tonight. Discussion on suspension of rules, only all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody against it? Motion carries, uh, would you like to consider it on third?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, that we consider pending ordinance thirty-one twenty-nine on third and final reading. Any discussion? Anybody out there? I'm preparing my roll call, though.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rich?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
We have, uh, passed that unanimously. We'll put those rates in effect, and that will help us somewhat. We're gonna go into department reports. Airport is not here tonight, so we'll skip that. EDG, I told him to keep it to thirty minutes, if at all possible. That's the radio station there, recording.
I hope I didn't just turn that off.
Hope you didn't either.
Well, I wanna check, uh-
The red light's on, it's probably all right.
Red light on?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry. Not my intent.
Where'd you go, Dan?
the activity that I've been involved with here, just as of late. Last week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I spent in Cleveland with, uh, four counterparts to myself, one from Blackford County, one from Grant County, and one from Rush County, along with, uh, this gal here that you see. She's the new president and CEO of Energize ECI. Her name is Mindy Kinworthy. Very nice article here from the Platinum Item, that, uh, gives a, a little background and bio on her. She's, she's just, uh, came on board about a month after I came on board for EDG. And since that time, we have paid our, our dues, and Connersville, Fayette County is a member of this. So, we, uh, as members of Energize ECI, which is a ten-county marketing, uh, regional group, uh, we get the benefits of, uh, Mindy's expertise. She worked at the state, on the state level, uh, IEDC, uh, for about seven, eight years, in a pretty high capacity. And, uh, strangely enough, she, she helped, uh, some of the paperwork for, was out, when, when that was coming through last year, she was still with us. At any rate, she lined up a trip for us to go to Cleveland. And in the process of doing that, we met with, uh, a whole bunch of site selectors and, uh, industry leaders, um, real estate developers, uh, finance people, that we never would've seen here in Fayette County, or in Rush County, or in Blackford County. They would not have come to us. We went to them. And, uh, it was a pretty fruitful trip. Uh, one of the, one of the great things that I, I came away with, and, um, I had one interested party that was asking about fifty-eight and a half, shovel ready, they were, they asked me how much, and I said, come to Connersville, we will make you a deal, the right business. And, uh, another one of the site selectors, uh, specializes in energy and breweries. And we have an abundance of water and sewage, and, uh, so, we're corresponding now. There may be a huge opportunity there for a lot of jobs, I don't know. We're in the preliminary stages of just talking with these people that I visited last week. So I just wanted to report to you that, uh, with us in this ten-county marketing group, uh, our, our story about Connersville, and the things that we've done, is starting to resonate with the people. Each one's had an opportunity to kinda tell our story, each one of the, the four counties that went on this trip. And, uh, Mindy would set it up, she would say, Dan, tell them about the, the Ford plant in Connersville. And so I would tell them about the million and three square feet that was there, and, and then how it's been repurposed, and, and now we've got a going business in there, and, uh, with a, a plan of expansion and future growth, that's evident to anyone who walked in. And so they're, they're very impressed. We, we have some assets in Connersville still, still yet, that aren't used. Uh, there's several buildings in town, uh, industrial space that have tall enough ceilings, railroad service, deep well docks, uh, and we're, we're taking those properties, as they call them, product, we're taking product to these, these site selectors, and we're trying to get something going. So I just thought it would be worthwhile for you, as a council, to know that, and, uh, for the citizens of Connersville to know that, that, uh, we're doing our level best to bring new business to Connersville. And aside from that, we're also working on existing business that's in Connersville, in retention, retaining what we have, and helping what we have here grow. Can't go into a lot of details about that, but we're working. Mayor and I've been working, the commissioners, county council, we're all working together trying to make good things happen for Connersville. That's my report to you tonight. Certainly entertain any questions, if anybody has any?
I, I'd like to just mention that we have made the first step in the re, city readiness, and, uh, you have the brochure on that?
I do.
Would you, would you read that, just a brief?
Sure.
This is something that we've been working on. Barker and I serve on the Work One Elected Officials Board, and, uh, we got into this about January, and basically what it is, is to have cities ready for when businesses come, that we have all the information, that we have all the technology, that we have everything. And, uh, we applied, and our application was accepted just, what, three weeks ago?
Yes.
And, uh, we are preparing to train people for Connersville. And the reason I wanted to mention this tonight, I talked with Work One last week, and I told Work One, because of my situation, I've got one more year as mayor, I think it'd be a waste of money to train me. Maybe most of you think it'd be a waste of money to train me anytime, but, uh, so I would like to send Dan to the training, and I think Dan's pretty much gonna agree to that. And they would like the community to send two people. One of the Work One people, this, this training's extensive. One of the Work One people is willing to take that part on our behalf, but we may have to pay the transportation only. All the training is furnished, but we have to pay the transportation, and there'll be four different training periods. The first one's in Atlanta, the second one's in-
It's determined after the first.
After the first, yeah. But anyway, that's why I wanted to bring this to you tonight, because, uh, I, I'm, I probably will have to transfer some money from the promotion account, since I won't be going, to send these two people, because it makes the city ready, that, it's for the city, okay? The community, but the city. And we'll be talking to the commissioners and the council, countywide, to see if they'll help also. But this is a program that, uh, only, uh, five counties are now into, am I right, five?
Right.
And we are in the first stages. And this is so important, to be ready, uh, because when they look at all the different places that, you know, site selectors look, and they see that, here's a city and county that's got all this, and they're ready to go, we get the first look, and it gives us a heads up. So I just wanted to mention that tonight, because I, I probably will be asking you to transfer some money, at first, at first training is in, what, what month?
First training is, this, uh, is in September, twenty-third and twenty-fourth in Atlanta.
Yeah. And I, I'm encouraging Dan, I, I think he should go, and I think, uh, we should use one of the Work One people to help represent us. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. You bet.
Okay, we're ready for our department reports. Transfer station, that would be, uh, who runs the transfer?
Do you mean, you have the, uh, reports, you have any questions?
Is, is the, uh, recycling holding up about the same?
Yes, it, you know, basically, man, it, it, it may change a half a ton of mine, because you have a certain individuals that recycle religiously, and those do, doing those that don't.
So charging for the bags hasn't changed?
No, no, absolutely not.
Any questions from Tom?
I'm sorry? Yeah, and we know him around about eight tons. Yeah.
Any questions for him? Our department can't be here by EMS, we've heard from you, you wanna talk again?
Hey, for the month of, uh, July, uh, the city share our expenses was forty-six thousand, eight twenty-three forty-five. Our receipts was twenty-one thousand, eight fifty-nine eighty-five, for a total of twenty-four thousand, nine sixty-three. We made two hundred and eleven. Any questions?
As you're overdone, Dale. Dale's running one man short, so, uh, zero overtime. Doing a good job, Dale. Any questions?
Thanks, Dan.
Park Superintendent. Park Superintendent. I want to tell you, Park Superintendent, you've learned bad habits from the former Park Superintendent, from the street. As I told Mr. Joe, the meeting's in here, not in the hall. He don't listen to me. He's telling me.
All right.
Everybody know the new Park Superintendent, Jessica Downe? Got a lot of experience and a degree in hospitality, and she's been up there, what, two weeks, three weeks?
This is my second full week. I was up there shouting like a little while, so.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Um, revenue for this month, right at forty-one thousand, eight hundred fifty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents, which pushes the year-to-date, uh, just over a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Um, expenditures for this month are ninety-four thousand, three hundred fifty-six dollars and fifty cents. And then some special activities programming, um, note to everyone, uh, soccer deadlines were last Friday for youth soccer. Um, we're still taking the last minute ones. We're actually right around two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty kids, uh, so far for this fall. Um, and then there's a couple flyers in the back here. Um, one is, we're starting an adult dodgeball league. Um, leave sign-ups going until September fifth. Uh, it's eighty dollars a team.
Is that indoor?
Mm-hmm. We're gonna do that in the Miller Center, in the gym.
That's new with you.
Yeah.
Are you wanting to sign up, ma'am?
I'm gonna sign up if you will.
Anyone's welcome to, to start a team, so.
I think you both have a son.
And we also have, um, our coed softball team sign-ups are going down to until August twenty-sixth, which is next Tuesday.
Summer discovery is over, how'd it go, can you tell us?
Um, I don't have all the final numbers in yet, but it went pretty well this year. I kind of was on the tail end of it, so.
Sure. The community, Sir Miller Building, brought in fourteen hundred sixty-five dollars, and the Roberts Building, five hundred forty-five in July.
Jesse, do you wanna report on the country music, on the bluegrass music, or you won't need to?
Go for it.
Daryl, I'm gonna make you come out here. Uh, as you know, we, uh, did the bluegrass music for adults, maybe they run from forty to eighty, and, uh, it was a trial for three months, and, uh, Daryl's been there all three weeks, I got there one week. How's it going, Daryl?
They seem to be really enjoying themselves. The first week, they had about a hundred and twenty-five, but I think part of that was part of the fair came over. So they seem to be up a little bit, but they're averaging about seventy-five to ninety a week. Real happy with that, you know? And I think it'll build soon as summer's over and they get, get a little cooler weather.
I think what this group would, are they taking good care of the building?
Yes, yes, I mean, it's cleaned up just like they found it, I mean, they've done a wonderful job. So, no complaints at all.
So as of today, you think it's a good program?
Yes, yeah, I think it's doing very well.
Any questions, council?
Thank you, Jesse.
I guess that means it's over.
Are they?
Police Department, anybody here from the Police Department?
Yeah. Well, we had, uh, nine hundred and two law instant reports, fifty-two citations issued, zero orders in force, as far as violations. Uh, hundred and thirty-five warnings for personal injury accidents, forty-four property damage accidents, zero fatalities, and a hundred and nine people got arrested.
David, overtime's awesome.
Well, thank you.
I think it's awful, eighty-nine dollars.
Thank you.
How we can handle it.
That's just good.
Uh, only thing I see in here is, uh, we've had a, several OPOs, and the gas leads up about a thousand dollars, that's what I see, so, comparing, so, that's about what I can see, I can see there. Other than that, everything's, uh, very comfortable with, uh, what's been going on.
June was an OPO month, but we reimbursed more.
Yes.
Cost of operating your department, Dave, a hundred and eighty-three thousand, ninety-nine dollars and forty-one cents. And Mary, you went by the fire department at twenty miles an hour, and didn't give me a chance to get their figure for the month.
Want to go, want to go back to that?
One hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents was the fire department. All the departments are down this month, approx, approximately ten percent, so.
What was the overtime on fire?
Uh, one thousand, seven hundred thirty-one dollars and seventy-one cents.
And that's all F, FLSA, where they have to work so many hours over because it's covered.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Street Department?
Our overtime, uh, wasn't too bad this time either. The MVH was, what's that total? What's the total for overtime for the MVH?
Three zeros.
Oh, zero, okay, I couldn't read that well.
Yeah, that's too bad.
And the way, DOT was a hundred and fifty-four, and that was, was the, the new trash truck. But anyway, uh, one thing I would like to mention, I mentioned it today, on September eighth, we're gonna be closing Grand Avenue from twentieth to twenty-fourth. Uh, what that means to the folks that live there is that we'll be picking the trash up in the alleys. So, I'll go around with, with a flyer and door to door, and let everybody know ahead of time, but for eighteen months, we'll be picking the trash up on those blocks in the alleys. And we've already had the truck down through there, everything's good to go. So, that's September, yeah, September eighth is when that starts on a Monday. So, we'll see what, how that works out. Twenty-first street's really been really good, as far as the trash pickup goes, we were able to go down the alleys there, and the people really helped and worked with us on that, so. Down at the upholstery shop and those kind of places, they kinda tripled us up, and that was good, so we could pick, have, any pickup places, so. Anything else?
Cost of, uh, operating your department, Dave, ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars, and thirteen percent, down also.
And what's it down?
Approximately ten percent, it's over a hundred thousand last month.
Blueback's, it's, it's, there's a couple of vehicles in-
Yes.
And that's kind of hit us hard. But they're, getting ready to be back, put back on the streets, so. Okay? Thank you.
Honestly, utilities, before these guys speak, I want to, you know, we had that complicated report that we used to get from the utilities. And I asked the new guys since they were starting to make up a simple report that all of us could understand. And this is the new report, so they'll go through that and explain it to us. One page at a time, John.
Pretty simple, so. First page is our monthly income, expenditure claims. It has all the way back for this year, spending, our fund balances and our claims. So, first column is for July, water, our fund balance listed with the water sewer and store water, our revenue for all three and our claims for all three. So example, the revenue for water for July was a hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars and the claims for water was one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. If you look at the report, you'll see some jumps here and there. Trying to go over some of that, but example, sewer. In February was a jump, not sewer, but yeah, sewer was a jump. We had a reimbursement of thirty thousand dollars, that's why the revenue's a little higher that month. And also expenditures, in February for sewer, we replaced some blowers out at the sewer plant. So every once in a while, the expenditures at the utilities are really high, so you see jumps. And July, claims, we had eighty thousand dollars at the meter's purchase. It's a little jump right there. But that is our revenue expenditures. Page two is overtime. Most of that is guys putting meters in on the weekends. And I think the water plant is scheduled overtime. I have the water pump at the sewer plant.
The Board of Works has authorized two hours of overtime each evening and five hours on Saturdays to get these meters in before cold weather. And remember, overtime out of the utility is paid from rates, not from taxpayers' money.
Your Honor, and if Council look at the bottom of page one, look how many meters they've installed. That's tremendous.
What'd you tell me this morning, how many we gotta put in, how many is left?
We got about six hundred to go. So we installed eighty-four Saturday. So, we're getting there.
First Senator's overtime at the water treatment plant, is that right, you guys? Oh, we have people assigned to work on Sunday, I was wondering. Some people work Wednesday through Sunday or something instead of Monday through Friday. Is there a reason why we have overtime in on Sunday?
Well, there's some that got called in, probably an alarm that came, maybe like after-hours alarm.
No, we worked at four o'clock, so you think after-hours?
We also had a water boil and they had to come in on that in July. Whenever there's a water boil, they have to come in.
Okay.
And he came in, I forgot, I don't know how many hours he worked, but I remember he came in.
In the last two pages.
Let me ask you this, Brad, because I don't know, is the on-call time overtime? It would show up in overtime too.
The water plant, they don't have a service for it.
They don't have? Okay.
In the last two pages is our work orders for water and sewer. In Apple, we had thirteen repair fifteen leaks, six water main breaks, and some miscellaneous repairs. And for sewer, we had eight customer complaints that we look at usually, overflows.
We didn't go and do a trail, we go out there quite a bit, don't we? I was wondering what happens out there, says miscellaneous. You know what happens out there, Brad? Okay, I was just wondering, I think we go out there so often.
I'd seen like someone called about deer trail, I can't think who called.
There's some drainage tissues out there sometimes.
Some drainage problems, yeah, I know, yeah. Could be what it was after a heavy rain or something.
Someone called my office, I don't remember what it was, but I remember that. Thank you. Do you like this form of report better?
Well, just getting ready to say, I appreciate this form a lot better.
Nancy, do you like this?
Yeah.
We thought we would try to get it down simple where they tell us how much to take in, how much to spend, and then list the things they do so you can kind of get an idea.
Well, we were telling people ago, like Brad had said, a little overtime on the meters. On here it says they've installed one thousand four hundred and one meters since May, or May thirty. So that overtime does amount to much when you talk about that many.
We priced the company that we bought the meters from and had we bought them putting the meters in, it would have been about thirty thousand dollar more money. That's why we're authorizing this, the Board of Works has been very careful. And they watch this so they don't, like it was raining or something, they don't call the guys in, but they have the guys in. We'll get this done shortly.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
I think our two utility people here are, you know, is doing an excellent job operating. I'm amazed that they've been able to get this work done, they're working in the office over there and they're taking care of personnel problems. I think things are pretty good, I don't know how the morale is, but.
Well, Brad's been very helpful with me in the transition, so I do appreciate that. It's been a good transition and I think we're doing really good so far.
And I asked in front of the Board of Works this morning, I asked, how's the new people at the sewage treatment plant? They're working with the old people, how's that going? So the council can hear.
I guess pretty good, I mean, the two retirees ending, leaving end of the month, so. I heard nothing positive about the sewer plant manager and the employees and the guys on the crews. They've been taking it very well and they're doing a great job for us.
That's what I like to hear.
You gotta figure, you got six people at work there and five of them are new.
All right, TV three, put it on autopilot. So we gotta ask for some additional.
All right, let's see, how's this show off? We're pretty busy last month, we had, of course, we did the fireworks live every year. Got some feedback on this year, that was nice. We do that for the nursing homes primarily because they can't beat out the sewers. Then, of course, we had a lot from the fair. Actually, we had the fair hosting at the fair this year, that was pretty good. That was the longest show we've ever produced at the fair, by the way, so.
I thought you were gonna wear a stow rag.
That was a long night. We also produced for the first time the new park department six-on-six adult soccer, which was fun to watch. They're very, very good and a lot of energy in a small area outside, so. We heard that, and of course, we'll continue to air the white water speedway racing. Our last race will be this weekend, we taped a bunch of them at one time, so it's gonna air this Thursday, Friday, Saturday at eight. Also this Thursday is the Council Speaks live call-in show and that will feature the city utility guys.
And the Park Superintendent.
Oh, we're great, okay.
You didn't know that?
From Melissa.
Melissa didn't tell you.
That's okay. But for the month, we had eleven hours thirty-three minutes of meetings, eleven hours forty-nine minutes of original programming. We were pretty busy all month long, we produced seven county meetings instead of the normal three. They were very busy last month, so. Also working on two new shows, just kind of getting to the early stages of that. One is a cooking show and we're looking for some ideas on that one. Something that has been requested for a while and so we're working hard to try and get that out. And I have some interesting ideas. And the other one is a local music talent show. And so we're working on featuring local bands and musicians, any of them, could be bluegrass, could be gospel, could be heavy metal. So, we're working on that, so if you have a local band, then give us a call, eight two five thirty-two forty-five.
I think that Fran should host that heavy metal.
Yeah, I love that.
So we're working on that, I'll be surprised with that later.
Oh, you didn't tell him he was gonna do that?
No, not going there.
That's all I got, any questions?
I do encourage people to watch Thursday night because I get all kinds of calls in my office that I can't answer. Why does it take you three days to fix a leak? You'll find out Thursday night. But if a leak is on Sunday, why don't you fix it Sunday evening? Just all kinds of calls about that, why is my water bill so high? How do you determine my water bill? Who reads my meter? All those questions that I get in my office will all be answered Thursday evening. You can ask these two guys anything you want about utilities. Then we will have the Park Superintendent telling about her dreams or her goals for the park and introduce her to the community so everybody can put a face with who's running the park. They knew that Mike was the Park Superintendent and he's probably still getting calls, but we're gonna do that. And I think this will be a great program for people that can really get a lot of information about their utilities and their, who's running their things, so. Watch that.
Feel free to call in.
Feel free to call in. Ask, I'd like for you to get some, ask them some question they can't answer.
There you go. Very good.
I'll see in the reports, John, we have to have some additionals in your department, we have to advertise.
Eventually coming up, I think that comes to the next meeting.
You don't want to ask for advertising tonight? I think we should, don't you think, go right ahead and ask permission to advertise?
I'm not sure what the loopholes are, how that works.
Let me give you a little background. When we changed hands over at the building, the fifth third bank, it turned out they rented the space in cubes. In our cube, there is no restroom, the one that we lease for John's brewery. So, we got some prices on, there was an elevator shaft that was meant to be the third elevator. It's just like a six-by-six room that's empty. And we got some prices to put a potty and a lavatory in there so that we could have our own restroom. When we have guests, we could send them, it would be handicap approved. And he's got some quotes and our best quote is fifty-six hundred, or sixty?
Sixty-five hundred.
Sixty-five hundred dollars. I talked with the building owner, they're not going to put a restroom in there because in our contract it says we have the right to use the common areas, which are the restrooms down the hall or downstairs. Well, it's embarrassing at night when the doors are locked and we have a guest. We don't have a bathroom unless you go downstairs to issues and answers. And so, we kind of worked with the owner of the building and asked if we could put that in and have it there because we have a permanent lease there. We pay a percentage of utilities, we don't pay rent. But we'd have our own bathroom, so when we're on TV or we have guests there and it would be handicap approved. We would like to take that out of the TV money, not tax money, and put John in a bathroom of his own. Also, we need to purchase a, and I can't tell what that thing is.
It's a switcher computer. The last one that we have is going on almost ten years old now. We've been updating it for quite some time, we'll take it all, we'll take it and put it on the workbench, pull all of its guts out and rebuild it. The problem that we're running into now is they stopped manufacturing the primary switching card inside it five years ago. And we can't get any more, we can't get them serviced. And I'm very concerned that the card's on its last leg. And when it goes, then we won't be able to do any live programming or things like that.
This money is in his account, there's enough money in his, it's not taxpayers' money, but we do need to appropriate it out of his account into, before we can spend it.
It's one of our long-term goal replacement, equipment replacement.
So how much is the?
Twenty, twenty thousand.
So we need, we need to advertise, that's the only two things we need? I would like for you to give me permission to advertise for additional appropriation. I don't want anybody to get the idea we're spending taxpayers' money here, we're spending the money that the viewers pay when they pay their cable TV and that's what we keep that thing.
You have, you have a fund for equipment?
There is a equipment line item that we keep that usually pretty small. And then whenever there's large items like this that come up, we just bring it to our council for your permission to go ahead and purchase that. So, that, we don't want to have a huge fund for that because most of the time, we don't need large purchases like that.
Now, what percentage do we pay on the rent, John?
On the building?
Yeah, the mayor said we, so we don't really pay a rent, we pay.
Twenty percent utilities.
Which amounts to, what? Roughly.
Ten thousand a year, maybe?
Maybe.
We're looking at about five hundred a month right now.
Who owns the building?
Car C.
Thank you.
So, any discussion, I'd like for someone to make a motion that we allow Julie to advertise for additional appropriation for those two items so we can get that done. Got a motion here, is there a second?
Second.
Got a second. Any further discussion? We had some other bids on that bathroom and they ran from fifteen thousand down to fifty-six or sixty-six?
Forty-five.
Sixty-six, forty-five?
Something like that.
Yeah, okay. And then we would consider that at the next meeting so we can get that done. Rule call vote, please. You'll have a rule call vote?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is there anything that we can do in-house as part of that bathroom?
Yeah, well, we're gonna install the door on it. I don't want to, since we don't own that building, however, we leased that part. I think it's perfectly all right for our man to work in that building because we leased that part. But I don't want him to do the plumbing in there. We can plumb city property, but that, that's really not city property. But we do lease it so he could change light bulb, paint a wall or anything like that. Don't you agree with that, Julie?
Yeah, I wouldn't want to run the plumbing in someone's.
So this would be for twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars?
Roughly.
That cover all that?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? I think I heard a second. Further discussion? Rule call vote?
Council McCreach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Choma?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Okay, we'll advertise for public hearing on that next time, John. And then we can get you through it, okay?
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
You just have to fight it out.
We appreciate the bathroom.
That's cold.
Okay, we have an opening here for public forum. Usually by the time we get to this point, we've lost public. Anybody like to speak on any issue? Rex, you are. None appearing, we'll move on. Any miscellaneous business, Nancy?
No.
Tom?
Yes, I do. I think it's the first Saturday in October, October the fourth. Fayette County Solid Waste District will be having a community shred day again. That's a transfer station for your sensitive documents. We'll do that from eight AM to eleven-thirty. Open to all Fayette County residents, no businesses. Thank you.
What was that, eight-thirty?
Eight to eleven-thirty.
Thank you.
You have anything, Debbie?
I don't have anything.
Dave?
Yeah.
How's the trail thing going?
Uh, I don't know.
Okay, I had Reverend Orr in today and he brought me some literature, he'd like to serve on your committee. He'd like to have information sent to him.
Have him contact Kenny.
Okay. I will, I see him about every day. Fran, you have anything further?
We heard anything concerning our hopefully money to assist us in bringing down abandoned houses and buildings.
Yeah, we keep, we continue to move forward on that, we've got partners that we've selected. DEA is working on two properties with us, a private individual is working on a house with us. You have allowed us to use that twelve thousand should we need it for moving forward. And I think the grants are about ready to go in. We've had, Diana's been to two or three training sessions, we've had one lady down here training us. I think we're gonna be able to take between six and eight houses down.
Good.
That's our plan. Is that the way you understand it?
That's all I have.
Thank you for sitting in for John Baker.
No, no problem.
We like you, but we hope John's back next time, we miss him. Did you hear from him this afternoon?
Uh, yeah, he wanted to make sure everything was going okay with him.
Is he back home or still?
They still on their MLB.
I'm ready for adjournment if.
Don't move.
Motion second for adjourn, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.